I got, thank you Chief, he has hand was up first, thank you so much.
The pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chief, roll call please.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you. All right, our first order of business is a proclamation for Fortuna Library Day and we have Carol Kinzer joining us to accept the proclamation. City of Fortuna proclamation of the Fortuna City Council recognition of Fortuna Library Day on March 12th, 2022. Whereas the library provides informational services to all members of our community and whereas the library promotes literacy and encourages reading among young people. And whereas in a world undergoing constant change, libraries provide enduring connections to the past and future of our communities, nations, and civilizations. And whereas libraries promote unrestricted access to information, provide entry to important research and service, community centers for lifelong learning. And whereas the Fortuna City Council supports Friends of the Library in providing young people access to more books. Now therefore, I sue long mayor of the city of Fortuna to hereby proclaim March 12th, 2022 as Fortuna Library Day. And urge everyone to pay special tribute to the contributions of the library in our community by supporting Library Day and visiting our library. Signed on March 7th, 2022, at City of Fortuna. And Carol, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, yeah, just a few. I'm Carol Kinzer and I'm a past president of the Fortuna Library, Friends of Fortuna Library. And I want to let you know, we've probably been doing Library Day for about 20 years, I'm not quite sure the exact amount. But we, we know that the county really supports this book sale. They come from all over the county and they tell us how much they have missed this for the last two years, so I think we'll have a big crowd. The dinner has changed a little bit this year because it's only going to be a drive-through. But we really appreciate Nick Conley, his crew, who has always been doing this dinner for us for so many years. So then we'll, we'll be able to, you know, have the dinner and the book sale. So with these funds that we do raise, we're really able to provide a lot of things for our library here in Fortuna. Some of the things are new books. We have the subscriptions for newspapers and magazines. We buy CDs and we have also that we sponsor the summer reading program. And the, also the family literacy night. And so we've bought even computers and furniture. So we've done quite a bit for the library, the things that they couldn't have ordinarily. And we just really appreciate, on behalf of Amy Conley, who could not be here, by the way, she's the president. And the rest of the board members, I want to tell you how much that we do appreciate your support from the city, so thank you very much.
Thank you Carol, thank you for joining us tonight, we appreciate it.
Sue?
Yes.
Ask Carol a question.
Yeah.
Um, can you give us the date of your dinner and your book sale?
Yes, it's this coming Saturday at Veterans Memorial Building. And the book sale is from 10 until 7:00. And actually at 4 o'clock, we have a bag of books, I mean a bag of books for a dollar after 4:00. And then the dinner is drive-through from 5 until 7:00. And so if anybody's interested in the dinner and did not get a letter, then they can call the library. And they do have the forms there. And did I answer your question? Okay, thank you Tammy.
All right, thanks Carol. Our next item is oral comments from the public, there should be a number on your screen, you can call in and chat with us about something that is undermined if you would like to. And while we are waiting to see if anyone calls or anyone from the public that is on Zoom raises their hand, we will move on to our consent calendar. We have three items, city council meetings from February 22nd, report of dispersments, a supplemental budget request for repairs to the DPO for window damages sustained by earthquake. Does anyone wish to pull any items? Seeing none.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Siana. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent. Mayor Long.
Yes.
All right, any calls from the public, Siana? I don't see any hands raised, you want to grab Tammy's vote real quick? Mayor Pro Tem Trent, I'm presuming you're voting yes on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I see no calls from the public, so we will move on to our discussion item of letter of no confidence for the Hummel County Auditor Controller. I know that this has been an issue throughout the county and I think that Fortuna's voice needs to be heard as well. So that our Fortuna voters understand the severity of the position not being efficient. And you know, I just think our, our people need to be aware, so that's why the discussion is on, on the agenda. You know, Mayor has some information and Supervisor Bushnell has joined us and I know she has information for us as well. Mayor, you want to start?
Sure, I'd be happy to, I put together just a quick presentation, just kind of with a summary of how the city has been impacted as well as some of our, as well as the schools in Fortuna. So I, I can show you that real quick, give me one second. So I'll just run through these real, real briefly. So really, the, the councils had some concerns stemming from the potential loss of the ROPS fund most recently. I reported that in my city manager's report and that could have been a potential loss of, to the city from the successor to the redevelopment agency, somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000. We think that's since been resolved, the report that was outstanding from the auditor was submitted, although we haven't received notice that that's been accepted, but we do think that that's been resolved. There's been ongoing issues in the county, those have been pretty obvious through all the board of supervisors' meetings and coverage in the press. Then Fortuna Union High School District and the Fortuna Elementary School District have also been impacted. And the council asked for this discussion item really to just consider directing staff to send a letter of no confidence to the auditor controller. So our finance director, Aaron Felley, I asked him what, what impacts have we had most recently or in general from late reports from auditor controller? There's a list here, one of them was the interest apportionment, the investment reports have not been received since 2020 and those, that's limited the city's ability to utilize interest earnings on city projects and delaying the ability of the city to complete its annual audits. The property tax allocation and distribution payments have been chronically delayed at least two to three months. Similarly, that's limited the city's ability to analyze property tax receipts and respond to unexpected changes of property tax receipts in a timely manner. And also delaying the ability to complete timely audits. I mentioned the late redevelopment property tax trust fund distribution report submissions that had the potential to cost the city between $200,000 and $400,000. And then most recently, it was brought, brought to our attention from the city of Riedel that there was an incorrect payment from the October COPS payment. So, and that resulted in the loss of the city of about $30,000 and Aaron may be able to add more on that, but I think that's something I would hope that could be recovered, but our finance director can tell you more there. And again, just to follow up, the auditor controller, after we made our concerns known regarding redevelopment property tax trust fund distribution report that was submitted not long after we raised that as an issue. We did ask the Fortuna school districts what their top issues were and those are really just restated here in the slide that they, the reports were wrong in the redevelopment agency pass-through funds. As property tax in fiscal year 2018, 2019, 2020. And it's their feeling that this error resulted in less state funding and to the tune of $197,000 for the high school district and $213,000 for the elementary school district. And they, they indicated that the process to get the auditor controller to submit the correction took nearly two years and required multiple outside consulting firms. And also the interest has not been apportioned since the last quarter of 2020 and the missing interest support apportionments are estimated to be 76,000, approximately $76,000 for fiscal year 2021. So really just impacting the cash flow of our local school districts. And so that's really what I have, I think it's a discussion item for the council to direct staff at this point. If you'd like us to write a letter on behalf of the council indicating, you know, confidence or sharing specific concerns with auditor controller, if you'd like to bring it back for a business item with an actual vote, we could certainly do that too. But I think you could give direction to staff of how you'd like us to proceed. With that, both our finance director, Aaron Felley, myself, we can help to answer questions and I know Supervisor Bushnell was on as well, she may want to add something.
So I also talked to the treasurer for the veterans here in Fortuna and the county pays a lot of the bills for their building utilities, different things that they agree to. And they have had a really tough time getting their money and I think that every time they actually received the check, it was because Supervisor Bushnell ran interference and got them paid. But you know, they really operate on a shoestring and you know, they're a really valued group in our town and to see them struggle to get their money is just frustrating. And Aaron, do you have anything to add?
No, I think the slides that Mayor provided summarize it pretty well, it's just been difficult to, you know, get any questions answered directly from the auditor controller. I predominantly, you know, have communication with her staff and they are usually responsive and helpful, but it's, you know, very limited or no communication directly with the auditor controller herself.
Aaron, how have our LTF and TDA funding, has it been on schedule or has it been late also?
Yeah, I, you know, I think two years ago, it was almost a year late and this last year it was more on schedule. So, you know, yeah, those are kind of sparse payments as well.
Because those are just pass-throughs. They don't, she doesn't administer the funds, it's just merely a pass-through that the county serves and there should be no reason for that to be late.
So just a clarification, Madam Mayor, so this is on for discussion, so we can give direction to staff. But am I assuming that we are unable to actually take a vote of no confidence tonight?
I believe Mayor had explained it that because it's on the agenda, we can direct staff to prepare a letter of a vote of no confidence that I can sign. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah, I don't, we're not expecting a vote, but really just direct in, direction to staff of what you'd like.
Supervisor Bushnell, do you have anything to add?
Um, thank you, Mayor Long, I just wanted to kind of just give you guys kind of a timeline from my perspective in the district. On November 22nd of 2021, our, the board of supervisors passed a vote of no confidence, three to two, it was not a majority vote. Additionally, Fortuna, I think the high school passed a vote of no confidence sometime after that. And then just my involvement with the city of Fortuna is that I have had to run interference several times with the vets hall and Fortuna schools and also the fire department. And then recently with your guys' problem, I was contacted by council and then spoke with Mayor at the same day or later. And so what I would just like to clarify for you guys is just for information of what I've had to do for your town. And then also I really do believe a lot of the issues are stemmed from the lack of communication, as Aaron said. Communication seems to be difficult with that office in our county setting. That is one of the big concerns is that communication is very difficult. And then I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you, appreciate that. Does anyone from council have any more questions for Aaron, Mayor, Michelle, anybody? Any thoughts?
I think just a statement, I think one of the more, I suppose, if you could say damning issues are, would be the letter that was sent by the Attorney General Julian Bosler to the auditor controller. And that outlines specifically a financial transactions report that is very delinquent as well, well, actually two of them that are now delinquent. And I really think that it's pretty clear that the auditor controller's abilities are substantially lacking. And you know, the issues are not because of a conflict in personality, a personal grudge or miscommunication. And I think the, this letter that I was referencing is available for anybody to look at, to read either on Lost Coast or in the Time Standard. And it, it verifies, the Attorney General's office verified that that letter was not sent in error or was it computer generated? So it kind of eliminates those suggestions from the controller, auditor controller that, that it was sent in error. So I, I just, I think that a vote of no confidence directing this city manager to provide a letter for a mayor to sign and send that is very much in order.
I agree with what Mike said, that it, it is in order. We have, whether the potential effects of loss of funding and Aaron's discussion, there has been a year-long delay in some funding. And this is not a good place to be in, none of us are overwhelmed with funding. So we need what is due to us and I think that we should also, I also think we should send the letter of no confidence.
Well, and some of my thoughts were that so far, the city of Fortuna has received all of our funding, possibly just late. And we do have reserves that we can work with, but her job is to get it done on time. But then when you have the schools and the vets hall and the fire department, those are all part of our city, those all affect our citizens, you know. Every single organization that's not getting their money on time, that's part of Fortuna, is part of our vote. I mean, there are citizens, there are voters and they deserve to have their finances in order as well.
We've also had some of our citizens who work for the county who haven't gotten paychecks on time too.
Right, some of our Fortuna people do work for the county, yep.
Mm-hmm. I definitely think we should go forward with this also.
And I agree. I was curious to know with all the outside influence or outside consultants that the school district had to employ, did they get any reimbursement for those out of those expenditures for recovering those losses? And we have man-hours into this too, with our finance director and potentially our council. And so, thank you Supervisor Bushnell for running interference on behalf of some of our most valued volunteers too. Because to add that stress to a fire district that's already 90% volunteer, what a frustration.
So Jeremy, I can answer that question about reimbursements for extra staff time, the answer would be no.
All right, well, I think we're all in agreement, so if someone wants to, I guess we could just make a motion or Mayor, you've got your direction, do you need us to do anything further?
Yeah, I'll just recognize that a consensus of the council is providing direction to send a letter with our concerns and the loss of confidence from the city council.
Okay. All right, anybody else, any last comments before we move on? Seeing none, all right. And.
Mayor, Mayor Long.
Yes.
On this item, we should send it out to the public since it's an agenda item.
Oh, thank you Ryan, and we will open it up for public comments if anyone on our Zoom call would like to comment, raise your hand, anyone else, you can call the number on the screen, we'll give you a couple minutes to do that.
See no hands on my Zoom people, Siana, any phone calls? I see Melissa Anderson coming in, but I don't know if she wants to comment.
Okay. Wait for a minute and see what she is up to.
Could I just say something real quick with regards to Tammy's comment? We, we had, I mean, I think there were quite a few county employees who did miss paychecks and have them late. And I tell you, I was, worked for the county for 25 plus years and in all that time, there might have been one, maybe two issues of paychecks. None of them that were, that I can remember not receiving, but maybe not the right amounts. But in over 25 years, I don't remember any kind of an issue with paychecks the way it's been with this, with this auditor report or auditor.
All right, anyone, Walt? I see your hand Walt.
Okay, Mayor Long, that's a question, will this letter be distributed to the public in a short, in what fashion?
Well, everything we do is public, do we want to publish it or do we want to, what are we, what are you thinking?
You know, that's up to the council, I could bring a draft back at the next council meeting if you like, if you want to have a formal vote at the next council meeting, we could do that. You know, if you don't want me to delay, I could send it and just provide a copy to the council, put one on the city webpage. I'm happy to do what the council would like.
I think that works, I don't know that we need to delay it, does anyone else have any comments?
I think that'll work too.
So send a letter in as short a time as possible and include it on the city website. I could bring it back for information or put it on my city manager's report, put it on our agenda packet for the next meeting.
They will probably put this on their report out anyway, they've been watching the meetings and sometimes they get it right, so maybe they'll pick that up, people will know we did it as well. All right, all Siana?
I don't see anybody wanting to comment at this time.
Okay, we'll close public comment on this item and move on to our city council business. Our first item is to authorize city managers to submit a building forward library infrastructure grant, resolution 2022-06.
Thank you Mayor Long, I have a brief staff report, give me one second. Okay, so the item in front of you is to approve resolution 2022-06 and authorize the city manager to submit a building forward library grant application. Just a brief summary, the city owns a library building that houses a Fortuna library at 753 14th Street. The county operates that library under an existing agreement. And talking with the county, the build it forward library grant call for applications recently came up and they awarded up to $10 million for critical infrastructure for libraries. So the staff at the library and some of the county staff for their facilities is very interested in pursuing one of these grants. Originally, we thought we may be able to do an expansion, we got pretty ambitious and we found that it only went for critical infrastructure. So that being said, the county has an existing on-call contract with Witcher Engineering and they're looking at things like accessibility, some of the critical function of the building such as the HVAC and also some of the functionally obsolescent aspects of the building. And so there, there's a pretty short timeframe, the grants are due on March 21st and they want to quickly identify a project and a cost and submit. So we don't have time to, they haven't yet developed the range of improvements they want. And so we have to have a resolution authorizing, you know, by the city to submit the grant application. And so that's why we're bringing it to you tonight. The library is, let's see, fiscal impact, the county will be providing the cost for the consultant and the development of the grant application. It's not expected that we'll provide any direct funding for the project at this time. We will be providing staff time to contribute to the development administration and oversight of the grant that will be reimbursable by the grant. And some of, there will be inevitably some time, we spent quite a bit of time already that's not reimbursable, but our hope is that they will be successful with the grant application. And the county and library staff are working to identify the source of matching funds. So there currently, there's no request that any city, city general funds would go towards this and I wouldn't submit an application with any grant, with any matching funds coming from the city without council approval. So with that, I'll turn back to the council with a recommendation to adopt resolution 2206 to authorize the city manager to submit the grant application, accept the grant funds and execute a grant agreement.
All right, we will open it up to the public or comment while we discuss it at the council. So if anyone would like to comment, raise your hand on Zoom or call the number on your screen. Council, thoughts, comments, questions?
Everyone's quiet.
I pushed the wrong button. I was just curious, having done some work on that building, I know where there's some functionally obsolete areas though. It's got a lot of glass in it that could be converted to double pane and save energy and HVAC wear and tear and things like that. But I just, from what Merit said, there is, at this time, there isn't any list of items that they are looking to tackle, is that correct?
I know they have some things in mind and they're trying to determine what, what meets the requirements of the grant. So I think the big one they're focusing is on accessibility, they have a long list of other things they'd like to, you know, for example, separate and make the book drop somewhere else. Because right now it makes noise where they have a study area, I think they're concerned about accessibility to the book drop as well. So I don't have a specific list and I know that they're working with their engineer and architect to pull that together.
Sounds like they're doing a good job of getting ready.
Yeah, and I don't expect this grant to be a major overhaul again, things like you, you said council member Johnson, you know, potentially replacing the windows, the HVAC system, making accessibility improvements, I think are going to be the focus. And I, I will, I will add that the county already has made a number of accessibility improvements in the building, in the city. They had done an audit and they had identified some shortcomings and they've been, they've made a number of improvements to the interior, the city's taking responsibility for it to the outside. And if the council remembers our CDBG project, we're looking at the path of travel from the bus stop near the parking lot at 11th and N to the library. So that's the part the city's taking on and we're expecting to make those improvements with our upcoming CDBG barrier removal project.
Mike Losi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a question, I know it hasn't been too long ago when they replaced some of the fascia and some of the underlayment on the roofing. But has the, has the roof been replaced lately?
I think council member Johnson may be more familiar with that, but I think it has been replaced, I think it was about 10 years ago, Mike, you remember?
I don't think it was that long ago, but yes, the, the roof was replaced, the old tar and gravel roof was stripped off. The rotten underlayment and some of the eaves were trimmed and they kept the same sightline. uh, they kept the same sightline, but they were brought back a little bit to get rid of some decay. And the supports where the roof sits on four different places was rebuilt. So it's been structurally improved in that area. Yeah, I think it was about heck about eight years ago, I think. It's been longer ago than I thought.
Okay. I, I knew that, uh, some of that had been done. I wasn't sure if the entire roof had been replaced. Thank you.
Any other questions? I see no one from the public wishing to comment, so we can close public comment and we want to a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution twenty-two dash zero six and read by title.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Resolution twenty-two dash zero six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna, authorizing the grant application acceptance and execution of the grant funds from state California budget act of twenty-twenty-one SB one twenty-nine. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozey?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, moving on to our next item, which has a really long title here. Discuss and adopt resolution twenty-two dash zero seven. A resolution of the city council accepting the submission by the police chief of a proposed military equipment use policy and requiring that the proposed policy be made publicly available on the Fortuna Police Department homepage of the city's website. Staff, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Long. Oh, go ahead, Casey, sorry.
I was gonna introduce you, but I'll let you jump right in, Ryan. Go ahead.
Sure. Uh, so, um, before you deny, uh, is resolution, uh, twenty-two dash oh seven, uh, with the attached, uh, proposed draft of a military equipment use policy. Um, this is the first procedural step and a number of procedural steps to come in April and May for the city to formally implement the requirements of Assembly Bill four-eight-one, which was signed by the governor into law. Um, I believe in November of last year, um, and is now effective. This is, um, one of a number of bills passed, um, in Sacramento aimed at increasing transparency within local law enforcement agencies. And the purpose of this assembly bill is to provide um, transparency and control over the funding acquisition and the use of military equipment as AB forty-nine, um, defines that term. And so the resolution before you tonight is merely accepting for filing and submission of the chief's draft uh, policy, which again is attached as exhibit A to the resolution. Uh, the next step will be for the proposed policy to be publicly available on the city's website. Um, and, uh, for a thirty-day period. Once that thirty-day period expires, the council will formally take up the draft policy, consider the substance of it and, uh, adopt by resolution the policy, making it the formal policy of the city of Fortuna Police Department. The main, uh, thrust of the policy is to provide um, an inventory of the currently possessed and owned military equipment. Um, and as you'll see from the staff report, the term military equipment has a lengthy definition. Um, every day, as the city's current, uh, provided the, um, provided a list of all the items as well as all the subrequirements that the statute, uh, requires. We will review the policy in detail, um, in April after the thirty-day review period has expired. Um, but for tonight, it's merely the council accepting for filing and submission the chief's draft uh, policy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief Dave, do you have anything to add?
No, um, thank you, Ryan. He covered, he covered it, uh, very nicely. It really is just a transparency bill. Um, I just want to say for the record that this was incredibly, uh, task-heavy and thank you to Ryan and his office for just the enormous resource and the significant amount of assistance. Thank you.
All right, we'll open public comment on this item. Does the council have any questions or comments while we wait for the public?
I just have a comment that, having read through this and the policy, it appears that the definition of military in this policy probably abiding by the state mandates and appears that it's been broadened. Doesn't, not everything appears military in my mind. I could be wrong, but it just appears that they've broadened the definition.
Any other comments or questions? I don't see anyone from the public raising their hands, so we'll close public comment. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Sure, I'll go ahead and move to adopt a resolution twenty-two dash zero seven and read by title.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Resolution twenty-two dash zero seven. A resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna, accepting the submission by the police chief of a proposed military equipment use policy and requiring that the proposed policy be made publicly available on the Fortuna Police Department homepage of the city's website. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozey?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you. Our next item is approval.
Excuse me, Mayor Long. Chief, I want to ride in the tank.
I have no such tank.
Okay. Well, we got a lot of fun toys according to this list.
There, there was quite a bit, um, of history to go through.
All right, moving on to our next item, approval of the full-time classification and pay rate schedule for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two. Resolution twenty-two dash zero eight.
Our city clerk, human resources director, Sienna Emmens, has a staff report on this item.
Yeah, so the next item is mine. I put together, um, a brief series of slides for you. Um, this is going to go over item C six. It's the amended full-time classification and pay rate, pay rate schedule for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. So as you're aware, negotiations between the city and the Fortuna employees and Fortuna Police Employees Association were completed last month and the memorandum of understanding were ratified at the last council meeting. Along with the MOUs, uh, the unrepresented and confidential employee resolution was also adopted. And both MOUs have been fully executed and the resolution's been signed and filed as a permanent record. Permanent city records, excuse me. Uh, the MOUs and resolution include the negotiated cost of living adjustments or COLAs as reflected in the table in your staff report. The amended full-time pay rate schedule is before you today for your consideration and it includes the COLAs for fifty fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two. Um, the part-time pay rate schedule is not being presented at this time as some of the part-time employees received an increase to their hourly wage in January due to the increase in minimum wage. In addition, all other part-time employees received a twenty-five, uh, twenty-five cent COLA based on the previous round of negotiations. Uh, staff does anticipate returning to council with an updated part-time pay rate schedule during the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three budget adoption cycle. Uh, so at this time, staff is recommending the council approve resolution twenty-two dash zero eight, adopting the amended full-time classification and pay rate schedule for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And I am available to answer any questions that you might have and Erin could also answer any questions specific to the pay rate schedule.
Okay, while we're waiting to do that, we'll open for public comment and go to the council for any comments, questions, thoughts?
I just wanted to, um, bring up on the last paragraph of page one that there's a typo when it says the part-time hourly wage increase, um, minimum wage from fifteen to sixteen, that should be fourteen to fifteen.
My apologies on the staff report. That what you were talking about, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Noted.
Anyone else have comments or questions? I don't see any public with hands up. No calls. We'll close public comment. Someone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash zero eight and read by title only.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Resolution twenty-two dash zero eight. A resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna, adopting the amended full-time classification and pay rate schedule for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozey?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you. We've got through our business items. City managers report.
Hey, thanks, Mayor Long. I have a brief, um, presentation again, just with the, to summarize a few items that I've been working on. Um, starting with the upcoming meeting schedule. So you, you will finally see a change. We'll be going back to in-person meetings. Tonight will be our last Zoom meeting. So our next council meeting on March twenty-first, first will be at six o'clock PM. That'll be in council chambers. Our next planning commission, that'll remain on Zoom. That's tomorrow because it was advertised as a Zoom meeting. And then our next measure committee meeting will be on March fifteenth, also in person. And our next runner community recreation and park district meeting will be April sixth. And so all meetings will be going to, um, in person at the city of Fortuna council chambers unless otherwise posted. So we're excited to, to be back in person and be able to have the public come to those meetings. Next item I have, um, council member Johnson will be happy to hear this. The bird scooters were once again redeployed within the city of Fortuna. I saw a few of them in front of the high school, even though the school was out today. Um, they were deployed on Sunday, so the, um, the, the trial period for bird scooters, which goes over the next year until the end of the calendar year is on again. So um, we're happy to take, um, comments from the public. If anybody has any questions, concerns, if you like seeing those, if they're helpful for trans, you know, you're getting from the bus stop to home or whatever the, the case may be. Um, we'd love to hear from you and we're hoping that these can help provide a, a, uh, a fix for the gap in transportation within the city. And then I've been spending a lot of effort on, um, working towards compliance on SB thirteen eighty-three. Um, we received a draft, draft roadmap from the consultant that is working on behalf of the region, really to identify the strategies to move forward and, and solve the the requirements and, and, or, or answer the answer, provide an answer to the requirements for compliance with SB thirteen-three. There's a number of parts to that. We're reviewing that now until April sixth, which is really just like an overview and and roadmap. And so we have, I have some, uh, some good ideas through, um, that work product of how we're going to be moving forward. We also, I also plan to retain the Coolant Tunnel Law Firm to review the franchising, the, the franchise agreement that we're working towards with Recology to include organic recycling and the mandatory collection. Of including organic waste. So I'll be bringing a number of things back to the council on that. And then also another item is we're working on the Redwood Way Bridge nuisance issues. I know some of the council members have been concerned about that. We have ongoing enforcement by our police department to prevent littering and other disturbances. And then we're also working to provide an estimate for some structural changes to, to make that a little less, um, desirable for just people being there. And so our city engineer met with the contractor and we're putting together an estimate for what it would cost to put some rock and other things in place that would discourage people from being there and spending time underneath that bridge. And then one other thing, Lolita CSD, they had some issues of having enough operators on staff. And so they've asked for our assistance. We had a past MOU that um, we provided some operator time to them. So I expect to, to approve a small MOU with them for just a few months. That would give some of our operators the ability to go up and help them for up to a couple of hours a day. We don't expect it to impact our operations and the city's operation, the operation of the city's wastewater treatment plant would remain a priority. So again, that'll be a three-month just to stop gap and we try to help the neighboring agencies, um, when they're in need and we're in a position to be able to do that. So we'll be moving forward with that. So that, that concludes my city manager's, city manager's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for Mayor? Seeing none, we'll move on to future agenda items. Do we have anything new? Seeing none, we'll move on to city council reports. Mike Johnson, you're up first.
Well, I have a, uh, historical commission meeting, which is the first in-person meeting in the city of Fortuna will have uh, following our lengthy Zoom, uh, period. And that will be at the museum this coming Wednesday at six o'clock. Uh, also on the seventeenth, I have an H cog meeting. And I have not received the agenda for that yet, so I'm not quite a hundred percent sure what will be on it. And I would like to say that with the bird scooters and the price of gas, we're liable to see a high utilization rate with those things because I got, went on a motorcycle ride today and paid, I think it was five dollars and sixty-five cents a gallon for a premium for the motorcycle. So if I could have taken the bird scooter down to Cooks Valley and back, I might have done it at that price. But, um, so at this moment, that's the, uh, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, our other Mike, Mike Lozey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a, uh, RCEA meeting on February the twenty-fourth. And, uh, had, uh, a great meeting. We had an update on the airport microgrid. Um, it's the largest solar array that's up and running with testing and commissioning for islanding um, capability. So we'll be looking at a final ribbon cutting for that probably sometime in June. If you haven't seen it, take a trip up to the, uh, McKinleyville Airport and drive by the airport. You'll see the acres of solar array out there in the, uh, in the field next to the airport. We had a report, uh, on the, uh, BOEM, the offshore wind process uh, for lease auction is on track for the fall of twenty-twenty-two. So that is kind of exciting and, uh, moving forward. We are the, uh, RCEA is, uh, ramping up for the EV rebate program as well as the electric bike rebate program. So we'll be seeing some rebates if, uh, folks want to purchase a, an electric bike or in a, uh, electric vehicle, there will be rebates that'll be available for you. Um, we had a report on the tumbleweed project, which is our long-duration storage agreement. Um, it's, uh, one of the first long-duration storage agreements under a joint procurement system. And we moved to allow, uh, the executive director, Matthew Marshall, to, uh, move forward with any of those agreements that he needs to, to take care of. Also, on the offshore wind project issue, the grant funding that the, uh, harbor commission put in for, which was over fifty-six million dollars for port work and upgrading was, uh, denied um, at the federal level. But, um, we're looking forward to, uh, we all can look forward to, um, the president's infrastructure bill. Um, that is going to put trillions of dollars into our infrastructure and hopefully some of those trillions of dollars will make their way to Humboldt Bay and Humboldt Harbor District. And, um, realistically, when you start talking about the offshore wind project. And um realistically, when you start talking about the offshore wind project, fifty-six million dollars is going to be a drop in the bucket, it would have been a start. But you're talking literally hundreds of millions of dollars to upgrade our harbor, the docks, to get the cranes in, uh, the equipment needed for these huge um offshore wind turbines. Um, so the, the sooner the feds and, and, and I think that there's a, uh, an acknowledgement at the state level and probably at the federal level that i- if, uh, if this project is going to move forward, they're going to have to uh provide some of those big dollars and get this project moving. So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mike, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first to report on is F bid, uh, we have our next meeting scheduled for this Thursday at two PM. Um, it's a public meeting, so all business owners or managers uh are welcome to attend. The draft audit will be on the agenda, uh, along with uh voting for new officers, some banking business, a new cell phone plan for our newly installed ED. And uh, an update, uh, oh, and working on an updated version of F bid's employment agreement. The board will also discuss involvement in events over the next year and the nature of F bids, the relationship with the core areas of uh Redwood Village and Strong's Creek and et cetera, the other downtown merchants, et cetera. Uh, President Hobelman is planning to give an F bid update in greater detail uh either at the next city council meeting or the first meeting in April. And um, they had to clean out the office at the Monday Club because the floors are getting resurfaced there. Uh, and I just want to say that uh I've been included in all the emails between the different board members lately and and they are really stepping up and, and doing a really, really well, a good job of being quality volunteers. Um, their enthusiasm and their attention to detail and not letting things just kind of slide as I've probably been guilty of in the past as well, um, is not the new MO of this board, so I'm proud of them and all the stuff they're doing there. Um, and then Parks and Rec, uh, I haven't had a meeting, uh, last one was canceled because it was Valentine's Day, but um just really love seeing all the activity, the, this great weather and these months and, and um I've seen uh Conroy Field full of baseball tryouts and, and the pavilion full of uh skaters and full of hoopsters and I'm just really excited to see um how much things are getting back to quote-unquote normal and uh appreciate all the volunteers and those organizations as well. And of course Cameron and his crew, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jeremy, Tammy.
Mayor. Um I've been busy with the Measure Z Committee, that has just started. Read the full agenda. My computer's talking to me. Sorry, um, I had my orientation, I am just a, an alternate at this point, so I can contribute or I can contribute with the discussion, but I'm not a voting member yet, but it's been very interesting, there's a lot of applications coming in and a little bit of money. So it's going to be a hard decisions and a lot of work, you know, recommending to the board of supervisors what we feel is the best options for this money. So once again, um, anybody out there who wants our drug task force officer and our school resource officer renewed, make sure you contact our supervisors and put in good words for that. And that's all I have to say on that one and um, I'm excited that our Redwood Empire Division will be having meetings again this year in person. So that's going to be exciting, um, we're looking forward to our first one the end of this month, so it'll be nice to um, talk to the other cities in the, in the division, it goes from, I think it is Cloverdale up to the Oregon border and into Lake County, so all of the cities get together, we have a, usually a business meeting and then we can discuss different things about our cities. So those are enjoyable and very informative and I'm excited to get back to those again, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Tammy. I know, this is our last council Zoom meeting, I'm so excited, I keep telling everybody, everybody I talk to, guess what, this is our last meeting. They're probably really tired of it, but I just count myself, so. Um, REDEC is planning an in-person visiting meeting uh sometime in March. Um, the last time we did it was probably five years ago and I think that there's two of us that were on the board way back when, so we've got a whole new group of people that may have some different thoughts and ideas for where we should be headed, so that's going to be kind of um interesting and it's always good to get everybody's input. Um, I'm gonna attend the meet, uh, meet the candidates dinner at the Elks Club on the nineteenth and at least Tammy and I don't know any about who else is attending the Lee California Cities Meeting, Pi on the twenty-fifth. Um, just finished up with hot shots yesterday, so I was really proud of my little team, how um, far they came and two kids who hadn't made baskets the whole year made a basket, one made three, so I get really excited about that too and they were just thrilled, so um fun times spending them with kids, you know, that's one of my passions is hanging out with young people, so. Um, we do have a closed session tonight, um, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to section five four nine five six point eight of the government code. APN two hundred dash zero eight four dash zero eight four. Negotiating parties are the city manager, Merritt Perry for the City of Fortuna and Jesse Crosswhite as negotiating party. Under negotiation, the price and terms of payment, so if anyone from the public has any comments on this item before we adjourn the closed session, you can raise your hand. Um, typically we don't get anybody on this, but just in case. And seeing none, hearing none, we can entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session.
Make a motion to adjourn the closed session?
Second.
All right, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you for all of those who joined us tonight and uh we will report out if there is anything to report, but next meeting, we will be live, join us at City Hall, be nice to see all of your smiling faces. Thanks for coming.